And this open meeting of the Needham Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure there will be public participation unless required by law. This meeting will not have public comment. First, we'll confirm that a quorum of the members of the planning board are present. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Paul Alpert.
Here.
Ted Owens.
Here.
Adam Block.
Here.
Martin Jacobs.
Here.
Thank you. Next, I'll introduce the Planning Department and other town staff. Planning Director Lee Newman.
Present.
Assistant Planner Alexandra Klee.
I'm here.
And staff who assists us in technical support, Clay Hutchinson. Well, Clay is not participating in the meeting, really. He's just here to help us, so he may have stepped away. That's fine. So since the first agenda item is 140 Kendrick Street, I'll now introduce and ask them to indicate that they are present, those who are here for the applicant. First, of a project manager for the engineering firm, Vanessa Hang in Breslin, VHB, Nick Scully.
Present.
Nick, we didn't hear you. Are you here?
Yes, present.
And Senior Counsel Rick DeAngelis.
Present.
Thank you. So that item is on our agenda for 7:20. I don't know if you want, we want to just wait for three minutes or take care of the minutes.
Actually, you're free to take care of it. It's not, it's not a notice.
Since it's not a notice hearing, we can just go right to it.
Yes.
All right. Well, what we have tonight is the decision that has been prepared for our review and sent around to us that if approved and the relief is voted, would would grant, you know, the various forms of relief for the property at 140 Kendrick Street that was the subject of the hearing on November 17th. So Planning Board members, does anyone have a question or comment on, on the decision? Mr. Alpert, any questions or comments on the decision?
No. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Owens.
I have no questions or comments.
Mr. Block.
I presume that you're satisfied with this draft.
Correct.
Okay, and I communicated one comment in this, just this, this afternoon to our Planning Director, and it had to do with what I, she pointed me to the condition that's listed as number 3.5, which now reads, and this was just something that was asked for at the, at the hearing. And the petitioner, I believe it was David, excuse me. Yeah, David Provost, who indicated that they would be happy, you know, the petition would be happy to do this, would be to contact the state to seek approval to upgrade the section of the path around Cutler Lake that is adjacent to the petitioner's property. The, the thing that strikes me is missing is another phrase that would say something like this, comma, and if approved, comma, the petitioner shall undertake such upgrade. Because otherwise, there's no obligation on the petitioner other than to contact the state and seek approval. I mean, I think the undertaking of the upgrade is implied, but I think it should be expressed. And of course, there wouldn't be any such, you know, improvement if they didn't get the state approval. Do you have any concern about that, Mr. DeAngelis?
No, we do not. The only thing I would ask is that you add, after if approved, add if approved by DCR.
Yes.
Clear that that's what you're looking for, a DCR approval.
That's absolutely right. And maybe we should spell it out. I hate to see acronyms without of Conservation and Recreation.
I think that's the intention, and that's what we, we believe we were agreeing to in any event. So you're right on point.
Very good.
You may also want to add a reference to the Conservation Commission, just because I, just in case they have any permitting this required as a function of those upgrades.
Yes, that I, I was kind of thinking that in the back of my mind. I wasn't sure if the, if the project already required Conservation Commission approval.
We do have an order of conditions and have been through that notice process.
You've already been through the process, but of course.
But we could work with, we could work with the members of the commission. You know, whether it be to amend that or, or to do it when we go through the certificate of compliance.
All right, very good. So Lee, could you, could you add appropriate language reference to the conservation? And I guess between the, that what you have already typed up here, it would say, and shall contact the Conservation Commission to seek whatever approvals may be needed. And then the final phrase, and if approved by the Division of Conservation and Recreation and by the Conservation Commission, the petitioner shall undertake such a upgrade. Okay?
That would be fine with us.
Good. Okay.
Just, just one technical, where it says the petitioner shall contact the state, change the state to the Division of, the, the, what is it? The Department of Conservation and Recreation? Or the Division of Conservation and Recreation?
You're right.
Excuse me, Mr. DeAngelis, did you say it actually is department?
I think it is department, yes.
All right, thank you. Then you're right. The first time it's referred to, it should say the petitioner shall contact the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation, DCR, to seek approval. And then when it's referred to later in the paragraph, then the initials DCR could be used. Okay, I think we're all set with that, Ben.
Madam Chair, I have no questions either.
Okay.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
So Madam Chair, I believe we have not yet voted the.
We have not.
So I move that we grant the requested major project site plan review special permit amendment under section 7.4 of the bylaw. And I move that we grant the requested further site plan review under major project site plan special permit 99-2, section 3.2, subject to the, to the plan modifications, conditions and limitations set forth in the decision.
So Mr. Alpert has moved that, that grant of relief. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Jacobs is second. So I'll call for a vote by roll call. Oh, first of all, is there any further discussion? Hearing. Mr. Block, are you speaking? You're noted.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I apologize. I wasn't sure if Mr. Alpert's, Alpert's motion incorporated the new changes we just made with respect to 3.5.
That, that will be on a motion to accept the decision once we grant the relief.
Understood. Thank you for the procedural correction.
You're welcome.
Very good. Then I think with that clarification and hearing no further discussion, a call for the vote by roll call. Mr. Alpert.
Yes.
Mr. Owens.
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
And Mr. Block.
Aye.
And the chair is aye. So the relief is granted, and we have before us a decision in the form presented by our Planning Director with one, the one modification that was discussed to section 3.5. Do we have a, a motion on approving the decision?
I move we approve the decision as presented to us by the Planning Director with the change to section 3.5 as previously discussed.
And so that motion was made by Mr. Alpert, and it was seconded by Mr. Block.
No.
Mr. Jacobs, good. So if, is there any further discussion with regard to the decision? All right, hearing none, I call for a vote by roll call. Mr. Alpert.
Aye.
Mr. Owens.
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
And Mr. Block.
Aye.
And the chair is aye, so the decision is approved. And that decision will be made available. We have a remote means of signing such decisions, and we usually get it done, you know, within a week. Would you say that's truly?
Yes, we should be able to manage that.
Right. Well, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. I look forward to seeing the changes in, at the site at 140 Kendrick.
We'd like to say thank you for your professionalism and attention, both Planning Board members and staff. It's always a pleasure to come to Needham and work cooperatively and collaboratively, collaboratively with you all. It's a real pleasure for us.
Thank you very much, Mr. DeAngelis.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for the kind words, sir.
All right.
You're most welcome.
I neglected at the beginning of the meeting, which is probably why, why we had the extra three minutes, to, to ask for a motion to continue this meeting if we ran into any technical difficulties. And so we would, if, if, if somebody would offer a motion to continue the meeting to December 15th at 7:15 PM, if there are technical difficulties arise, arise that prevent us.
Second.
So I have a motion. I have a second. Call a roll call on that. Mr. Alpert.
Aye.
Mr. Owens.
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
Aye.
And the chair is aye, so we have that in. And also, I've been customarily, sometimes I have some technical difficulty. A motion that if, if the chair should encounter technical difficulty and be absent from the meeting, the vice chair, Mr. Alpert would serve his chair. May I have a motion? And a second?
Second.
Second, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Mr. Alpert.
Aye.
Mr. Owens.
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
And Mr. Block.
Aye.
And the chair is aye. So we're taking care of those technical issues. So next on our agenda is the, the Oak Street subdivision. And what we have, let's see. All right, let me put this aside. What we have is a letter. Interesting, it's not dated, but it, it's written on it that it was mailed June 12th to 2020 to the Needham Planning Board regarding the Oak Street subdivision, requesting the release of two existing bonds that were set for, for two, two lots in the subdivision, 68 Oak Street and 11 Cypress Street. And each bond is the amount of 3,500. And then it mentions the sale dates for both of the lots, which were, oh, 68 Oak Street was in 2017 and 11 Cypress Street was in 2019. And the letter is from Jorge Oslan, Home Improvement, New Construction. And so on September 2nd, a memorandum from our Planning Department, it was sent to Tim McDonald, the Director of the Health Department, and Tara Gersh, the Assistant Director of the Health Department, to make sure that they are satisfied, because this was up to, to ensure that the drainage for these two lots was, was performed in accordance with the plan and that there were no drainage problems. So then in response, we have this memo to Lee Newman and Planning Board from Tara Gersh, dated November 13, 2020, regarding the severity on the Oak Street subdivision of the off-street drainage bonds for these two lots, lot one and lot two. And she says, "The owners and abutters of these, the owners of these two properties and the abutters to the two properties were notified by certified mail with this request to determine if they had any concerns relating to off-street drainage or standing water erosion issues on or about the properties. And the Health Department received nothing back in response. A site visit of the lots was conducted by the Public Health Division with no issues observed." So the, the Board of Health actually had this on its agenda and did vote to approve the release of the bond for both lots, for the total bond release of 7,000. And that vote was taken on November 12th. So it looks like everything is all set, and that we're, we're called upon to vote to release $7,000 drainage bond for these two lots, 68 Oak Street and 11 Cypress in the Oak Street subdivision.
I so move that we release, we allow the release of the $7,000.
Okay, so Mr. Jacobs moved to allow the release. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Alpert, seconds. So I'll call for a vote. Mr. Alpert.
Aye.
Well, I should have asked. There's no questions or comments, right? Before I continue with the vote? No? Okay. So we have Mr. Alpert's aye. Mr. Owens.
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
And Mr. Block.
Aye.
And the chair is aye, so that release is approved. Okay, so now we move to a discussion of the Highland Commercial One rezoning and planning study. And Lee Newman is going to give us a project update, and we're going to discuss and tell us what she proposes as the next steps.
Okay, so I have, I have been working with Studio on I and Natasha in particular to come up with a work program of the work that her firm would perform to allow the urban design plan to move forward. And I just wanted to walk you through the components of what I'm going to be asking her for, just to make sure that I'm getting the modeling done that you anticipate and expect. So I have asked her to prepare for us basically presentation drawings, which would show how that site could be developed under existing zoning. And we had talked earlier about using a warehouse as an example. So that's the example I'm going to ask for to model. And for that component, we would get an aerial view and site plans, which would show us the scale and dimensions, as well as all the setback information. The next item I was going to ask her to model was, under the proposed zoning scheme, how this site would be developed on, at the as-of-right FAR. This is going to require some more input from the board, because we had talked about, at the time she does the modeling, because we had talked about dropping the FAR for the as-of-right situation slightly based upon the input we had gotten from town meeting, but we hadn't finalized our decision around that. And so before she does the modeling, we would need to agree on a number. But so she would do modeling on, I would anticipate, a new revised as-of-right FAR for showing basically, you know, commercial development at that site, 15% retail with 85% split between corporate office and research and development. And for that scenario, again, she would prepare an aerial view, site plans with setbacks and street perspectives. And then the third piece would be the drawings that would look at a special permit at that property under that FAR of 1.35 that we agreed on, under two land use scenarios. The first land use scenario would again be the 15% of retail and the 85% split between the office and the research and development. And the second land use component would be with 250 units of residential housing with the remainder split between retail, office, corporate office and research and development. And for that, she would also give us an aerial view. We would have all the zoning setback dimensional drawings, and we would have renderings done that were more expressive than just street perspectives. It would actually show facade treatments, which would allow people to better visualize how the development itself would look. And the fourth piece of her work would be to give us some information on the kinds of standards we ought to be considering to embed into zoning that look at a sustainable development and what the board might consider in terms of its criteria when evaluating this to see that those goals are accomplished. So that's kind of just the framework of the information, I thought, that would be helpful to you in, in terms of making decisions to finalize the numbers that we're going to have in the zoning. And I, I just wanted to kind of throw it out there and, and see if, if I, if I'm on the right track before I finalize that with her, or if not, let me know how it should be modified, or if there's some things I should be considering that I haven't considered, I'd like to hear about it.
And, and Lee, just to, for background, the board is, is aware, is that correct? I know that, I think we all attended the meeting with the Select Board that was held in the morning a couple of weeks ago, where the traffic, the traffic impact study was presented. So you're aware, yeah.
I believe everybody was present for that, and I believe everybody's aware of the fact that the participants at that meeting, the Select Board, the Finance Committee and the Planning Board were satisfied that the 1.3 FAR was attainable, and it was attainable without having negative impacts on infrastructure that which couldn't otherwise be accommodated.
Okay, so I just want to make sure, I was taking some notes, I want to just make sure I got everything right. You were talking about, first of all, a model of what could be done under current zoning, is that correct?
Yes, earlier, when we talked about doing this earlier and, and didn't proceed with it, we had, we had talked about doing, looking at, showing people what, what can happen under, under the zoning now as of right. And of course, a warehouse use is allowed. So that was the presentation we were of what, of what can happen on the site presently. I think you wanted to have the information up on so that that could be presented at the public hearing or in any community meeting, so people would understand what could actually happen there under today's rules.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Block.
I have a question, a couple of questions for Lee. Do we, is it possible to also get an understanding or a rendering of what would be possible for office if it was not a warehouse? In other words, what if, what's available by right for the Mazi family now to lease out the property for a three-story office building or a four-story office building at the, at its, for someone to develop, you know, the largest massing possible on that site?
Well, we, we can do that. I think the question is, what is the land, what is the land use you would like her to represent? And these, you know, these drawings are expensive, they're time consuming, so.
I just, I, I agree. I'm just thinking through that the reason why we were talking about warehouse, and we, maybe on this basis, we stick to the warehouse, but someone would, someone may ask a town meeting, well, what would this look like as an alternative if we did nothing? That, that argument in itself could be persuasive, where if it goes through the special permit process, we would have more, as the planning board, more control and more say in what is ultimately developed and how it looks, et cetera, and whatever mitigations could be exacted. So if we're dealing with warehouse, warehouse is probably perceived as the ugliest possibility that's allowed by right to be, you know, I apologize for using crass terms, but that's the sentiment, I think. And I wonder if an office tower or several office towers could go in by right now if that would be equally displeasing? And if it's fairly easy for her to do a simple rendering, not necessarily doing aerials of it, but just to see it on, on the site? If that's an easy thing for her to sketch out, an extra $500 for that in comparison to everything else that she is preparing, it might be a helpful tool. But if the rest of the board believes that just going with a warehouse on an as-of-right under the current conditions is the worst position, then I guess we go with that.
I'd like to follow what Adam Block said with a question. It is a large site. Could the existing condition plan show a warehouse here and an office building there? And with the explanation that a warehouse could only be built by special permit, but this is what you have now. It, would that make sense as a possibility?
Well, warehouse is allowed by right, and certainly, I mean, you.
Oh, it is allowed by right. Oh, okay.
And you can determine the land use mix that you want. I mean, we could do office under the as-of-right zoning, we could do warehouse under the as-of-right zoning, and we could do a combination. I think earlier we had talked about presenting warehouse as an example, but if you want to rethink that, we, we, we can rethink it.
I mean, I don't want to think it any more than tonight. Ted, you have good experience and good instinct on this. When the idea of looking at an as-of-right, would you recommend sticking with just a warehouse, or would you also want to see a basic sketch of what the largest office massing would look like by right as well?
I, I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other. I'm okay with the warehouse.
Okay, just having one alternative as an, as of right.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay. I don't want to, I certainly don't want to hold this up.
No, I, I want to, I'm trying to, that's why, that's why I'm reaching out to you, because I want to work on a final scope with her and then send it out to you maybe later this week and get this moving forward so that we can be looking at presentation drawings in January.
And what about Paul Alpert? Turn to you next. Any comment on, on that aspect of it or any of the other?
No, I, I'm, I'm fine with just showing the warehouse as an example of what could be done now. I'm, I'm quickly looking through the, the use table that we have here. It's, it's presently zoned industrial one. And we have our brand new green-covered, beautiful green cover bylaws that were just published, so it's totally up to date. And there are quite a few uses that are allowed. Without looking at it, my recollection though is that it's severely limited by the height restrictions that are presently within industrial one, so I think that for, for the purposes of presenting to town meeting, we only, we really only need to present one possible use. And given its location. And given its location, you know, right off the highway with the size limitations that are presently zoned, I think a warehouse as a present use is a reasonable position to say, you know, if Muzzy weren't there, this is something that, that would likely could go in there. There are a lot of other uses in the zoning table, but given, given the restrictions of the lot, this is probably a good one for you to, to know what something would look like if we didn't pass a zoning change.
Marty, any other point of view you want to throw in? Mr. Jacobs?
No, I guess I generally agree with Ted and Paul. You know, what's, what's sticking in my mind is we're, we're moving ahead with this. But we're doing it sort of ignoring the fact that the world may have changed permanently with this COVID. And the people not using office space the way they were, and maybe that'll continue. So I, I, I don't know, that's a lingering concern that I have. And, and that, if that's true, if office space is not going to be in demand the way it has been going forward. And I keep hearing stories of people, TripAdvisor subletting the parametrics technology they're divvying up because they, they got to re-tenant the building because parametric technology moved that, moved out. I mean, I keep hearing all this, and I just don't know whether the world has changed. And so, and if so, and I'm not sure anybody's going to be able to tell us accurately whether that's true, but if it is so, modeling for office space may be an empty exercise. So I, I don't know. I don't know what to say.
Well, I do want to recognize Mr. Block. Let me make, well, two comments. One, I forget when this was said, whether it was when we were either bringing this before town meeting or having the hearing, I guess it was a hearing before we went to town meeting a year or so ago. Somebody commented that by mentioning warehouse, we were just trying to scare people. Mentioning the most, the use that people would dislike. And when, when Adam suggested perhaps we should be looking at portraying something else, that, that came into my head, that comment, we were just trying to scare us with the worst looking thing. So I was actually wondering, you know, if showing a warehouse and an office building might kind of make that seem less like we're trying to present something bad, just to argue for our changes, you know what I mean? And my other comment, just in response to what Mark Jacobs said about demand. The Newton Needham Chamber of Commerce has a program coming up very soon. I could go to my calendar and find the day and time, but it's, might even be this week. Where people involved in real estate development, commercial real estate development are going to be discussing that very issue on demand and what, what are we looking for in the future, in case, in case board members are interested. I don't have any answers, but I, I think we might learn something from that. And now recognizing Adam Block who had a further comment.
Thank you. So I, I brought that comment up initially about whether we should have something else on an as-is basis. Because I too remember that there was some comment about it. And I wasn't sure if after that, Lee, if we had heard somewhere somehow that Muzzy, Muzzy, if we don't get this passed, Muzzy is already working on backup plans to, if not sell the property, to lease it out to effectively a new, to a developer. And that they were, and that they were looking at it as an office in some kind of an office capacity. To Marty's point, that was certainly pre-COVID. Now, being, sitting in my position as chair of, of the Council of Economic Advisers, one of the things that I've been having on our agenda on an ongoing basis is a report from the commercial brokers on the council to advise us about what's happening. And certainly retail has been adversely affected. And the greatest impact COVID has had on commercial, on office, on the office subsector within commercial real estate has been in Boston proper. That in fact, the, the suburbs have been, have generally since March been, you know, the demand has been pretty good. It has not been as strong as a prior year. The overall activity, the number of showing tours, the number of transactions is less than it was in a prior year. I apologize, my diabetes alarm is buzzing, I'll try to quiet it. And there was, there was a pause in activity at the, in, in March as a result of COVID. But then it actually did start to pick up once brokers figured out how to actually conduct tours safely. Activity continued, and what they're finding is that businesses have been looking to branch out from the, from the city center, from Boston, out to the suburbs, in part because it's cheaper space. And in the event they're required to socially distance in the offices, that they actually need that space. The concern in the center of Boston is that you're in a 30, 40 or 50 floor office tower. You're riding an elevator and substantially increasing your exposure in a confined space with 12 or 20 people, and that's a major risk, a health risk. But if you can go up the stairs, or you're only in an elevator two or three floors, it's a much safer environment from a COVID perspective. And yet, we then fast forward through to now. And in our November, I'm just reading the minutes of the November CEA meeting, and there has been a bit of a seasonal pause in some of the commercial activity, which is not unusual on a seasonal basis. In other words, seasonally, this time of the year tends to be a little slow. And, and so the point of this is to say that the, the effect of COVID on commercial office space has not really seen deteriorate, a substantial deterioration in demand outside of Boston proper. Demand space for lab space has risen dramatically and has, and has had the greatest benefit. But that office space 128 has actually been performing fairly well under the circumstance. Those businesses haven't, businesses that had already been in trouble financially, closed and were relocating. And you know, otherwise, these businesses have, these tenants, you know, have been in the three-year of a five-year term or eight years into a 10-year term and aren't just suddenly vacating and, and quitting their lease, certainly without penalty. That's not really been happening, other than in Boston proper. So we expect that by the end of the second quarter, the, you know, the distribution will be fairly widespread into the community for the vaccine. And I would not want to see us risk losing an opportunity for what may be a short-term reality. Although what you're, I acknowledge what you're saying, Marty, is that there may be long-term consequences overall to the commercial office sector. From the best, from the best, since we've seen though, the suburbs would actually reap the reward of that as opposed to Boston, because demand will remain fairly steady.
So if I could sum up what you were saying, Adam, is that you think when it comes to portraying existing, what could be allowed under existing zoning, it is feasible to think that demand would be there for a smaller scale office building? Just as well as might be there for a warehouse?
And perhaps greater, because the price per square foot, you know, the developer would benefit from the greatest price per square foot, if that's office. You know, that's office, because the developers for lab space, I think, Lee, you know, they're, they're in Lexington and Waltham or had been driven there as opposed to Needham, because the cost of the dirt is so much higher here. And the amenities that you need are greater, but that's just for lab space. Warehouse is different.
Okay, well, how, I don't want to take a vote on this. I, I want to come to some agreement here in, in guidance for, for Lee. So we, really what we have before us are three things, that existing, under existing zoning, show a warehouse development for the entire property. Or show a site for office, a site for warehouse. Or or show it entirely developed for office under current zoning. And of course, there are, there will be town meeting members will say, well, gee, you know, that's nice, I'm not sure I want it to be taller. But there's where our fiscal impact report comes in, because why are we doing this? We're doing this to have a property that will bring in more tax revenue as, you know, the, the developments on the other side of 128 have been to the benefit of the town. So what do you think will, you know, as far as comparing with existing likelihood would be the best thing to, to show?
If I may make a comment before Lee answers that question. I thought, and I'm going back to very early when Devera was presenting this to us. I thought that the issue was that under current zoning, creating an office building at that location with the FAR and the setbacks and the height restrictions as presently existing, it is not cost-effective for a developer to raise the current Muzzy building and build a brand-new building to get the number of offices or the number of research and development. I guess offices is still the same, the, the, the proper word that can, that can justify a return on the cost of building, the building and make us, make a profit that a developer is, 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 is willing to, to proceed. So to say, yes, you can put an office building there, and here's what it would look like under the current zoning, can we say, which is.
Nobody's going to do it.
But nobody's going to do it. Or we're being told that unless we give more density for the space, a developer is not interested in doing this. So, yeah, we can, we can have Natasha put it together. It's a lot of work for her. I assume that we're paying for this, so, you know, and we have a budget, so, you know, we have to stay within budget. And so to have her do a dozen different scenarios is not feasible.
No, all right, Paul, that, that's very useful to remember that rationale being presented back then. And that, it seems to me argues then for, for showing the warehouse as, as, as we proposed. And I thought, I actually thought I saw Adam Block kind of nodding, nodding up, and yes, he agrees. It is thumbs up now. On the idea that that, what we all know that warehouse space is in great demand and the, the economy is going in that direction and may, may not go back with regard to a delivery of, of, of goods. So so all the more reason to go for that as the existing condition. So are we, we in agreement on that now? We've talked it through. Any more comments on that, on the number one thing, the existing condition plan? Okay, so then then the next thing is the model of what would be allowed by right under the proposed zoning with an assumed split of 15% retail and 85% combination of office and R and D. And, and then, as I won't repeat everything Lee said, I think we remember then, you know, then we were going to go to what might be allowed by special permit and include the possibility of, of 250 units of housing with the remainder being a combination of, oh, would the housing, Lee, also, the housing option also include some retail?
Yeah, the housing option was going to be mixed use, so it was going to be the housing, and then it was going to have your, the two office components and then retail. It was going to be basically a mixed-use model, and that would only be done with a special permit circumstance.
Yes. So do, any further comments on, on that proposal?
Not on the proposal, but I do have on the, on the overall process.
Yes, that was my next, that, that was the next place I wanted to go. When we talked, when we agreed on what this was all about. Earlier, when we talked about putting this together, we had planned on doing neighborhood meetings, we had planned on doing a community meeting. All prior to the public hearing on zoning. I'd just like to get a sense from you of what you feel, the public, what the process ought to be in terms of engaging the public moving forward. Do you feel comfortable just, are working with Natasha and kind of developing the urban design plans and moving forward to a public hearing without a community meeting? Or do you want a community meeting in, as an interim step?
I'd like to ask Adam, because you're an officer for the Needham Heights Neighborhood Association. Do you think a, a community meeting that would be hosted by the Needham Heights Neighborhood Association would be a, a, a useful step in this process?
I think it, I think, I think it could. Certainly, the, I, the Needham Heights Neighborhood Association would welcome the opportunity to host another event. I just want to look at it in terms of timing and process and what's best for the process for ourselves, first of all. And work back on a schedule and figure out at that point, what makes sense. Like, it seems to me, we need, I think we as the planning board now need to formalize in some way what the scope of the new zoning would look like, draft it out. And then submit that to FinCom and the Select Board pretty soon for their buy-in, at least on some summary basis. And then, and then, how long will it take the urban planner to make all these designs ready?
I was talking to Natasha about having the first draft of that to you, either the first or the second week of January. So I think once we are comfortable with the urban design plan and the densities that it's showing and the use profile, that going back and tinkering with the zoning itself, the language is not that difficult. We've already pretty much just, just, you know, just thought about the setbacks along Gould and Highland, how deep it should be before you move to a greater height. You know, where the driveway should be located, given the input from the traffic consultant. So I think once we see the urban design work and feel comfortable with the density profile, actually as it presents itself on the parcel, I think the tinkering to the. I think the tinkering to the zoning can happen in January. But I also, I also think it's, you know, there is not a long timeline here. And so building a community meeting in when we've got to hold a public hearing on the zoning and making sure everything's ready for a warrant is tight. And given the COVID context, I wasn't sure how much of a benefit it would really, how much of a benefit we would really derive out of that process on Zoom.
Yeah, on Zoom. And Paul Alpert has a comment.
Yes, I think it's important that we have a community meeting in one form or another before we have a hearing. Mostly, I think it's important from a political point of view that the community feels, I shouldn't say feels, that the community knows that we value their input, that we're seeking their input, or at least that we value their being educated of what we're doing before we go forward with the hearing. To have that as their first opportunity to hear what we're doing and to comment, I think is not fair to the surrounding neighborhood, to the Needham Heights. It's, you know, the entire Needham Heights area. And having said that, I, I welcome their comments. So I seek their comments. And so if, if we give it a chance to present it to them beforehand, even if they're just sitting and listening at that meeting, it gives them time to develop their comments and their questions for the public hearing.
I agree. And I also, I also think that that meeting should be held at the soonest possible date. Because the closer you come to town meeting with this, the more the community is going to feel as though it's already done, it's already baked in and their comments don't mean much. I'd like them to understand that it's the opposite. I'd like this meeting to be as soon as possible.
I think it has to be in February. I mean, we need to do the urban design work with Natasha in January. I'd need to tinker with the zoning in January. And I think we'd be looking at the community meeting then probably in February and then the public hearing on the zoning in March.
Sounds good to me.
Yes, Ted Owens has a comment.
Oh, I hate to be the devil's advocate. But I already know what those comments are going to be. One comment you're going to hear is, what's the rush? Why are you pushing this thing through? I don't believe that having a public hearing, having a public session prior to the hearing will add any light to the discussion. I think that what you'll do is you'll bring out all the opposition, just as we did last year. But if you want to go ahead and do it, go ahead. I'm with Lee in that today's the first of December. And I just want to remind everybody that in order to get all this done, you don't have any room to maneuver at all. Lee's being a bit polite when she says it's tight. You're almost out of time now if you want to get this all done. But I will defer to the group.
What do you mean by that, Ted?
What do I mean by what?
What do you mean by that? Can you explain the, the timing, procedure and process? Because I just don't know.
Well, if, as soon as Lee starts to lay out for you the timetable in terms of when we need to do the hearing, how much advance notice we need for the hearing, when we need to get it into the newspaper, when we, what we need to put in the newspaper, we need to have the articles written. I'm just telling you, based on past experience, starting on the first of December, you will be lucky to be done. And then you have to consider, okay, when does it have to go into the warrant? When does it have to go to selectment? When does it have to be printed? You're not talking, you don't have until May. You have probably until sometime around the end of March.
So Lee, it sounds like you've got this written in your head.
What Ted is saying is, 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 is right, you know?
I've just been down the road before, Gene, that's all.
He's coming, been down this road before and, and, and he's right. I mean, it's, it's a very, it's a very difficult schedule. I mean, I, I, I mean, I could argue that we've, we've already presented this. We've already held a community meeting after the zoning failed. We heard what people were thinking. We've dropped the FAR.
Which was most substantive comment.
Was the most substantial comment. We're looking at modeling housing and making housing part of the proposal. We're looking at revising the zoning so it includes, you know, sustainable development, you know, principles.
It depends on what you mean by a substantive comment.
Well, I, what I, what I meant was that other than, I don't want to, I'm afraid to use the word NIMBY, but maybe it's appropriate. There were so, there were so many comments that were so far flung and unreasonable and unrealistic, like for instance, using the space, the town buy it and use it as a skating rink. It's just nonsensical. Although a great fantasy nevertheless. The, the more substantive feedback we had was on, on density and on use, you know, allowed uses.
But haven't we already received that feedback?
I agree, we have. That was accomplished by that meeting. I agree with you.
I just don't know why you're rushing this thing. You, you know, you're springing it on us at the last second. You're just shoving it through. Why don't you slow down and study it? How many times do we hear that?
Another year, yeah, another year. Well, all right, I know Marty was very positive about the idea of a community meeting and what we might gain from it.
Well, I think the reason is, the reasons that Paul stated, I think you want to get as much community buy-in as you can. You're not going to get everybody. You're definitely going to hear naysayers. I totally expect it. But as much as you can, I think you'd like to get their buy-in.
Yes, and, and I said, it was Marty who said that. You agreed with it, but it actually was Paul who said that, right? Yeah.
Adam has his name up.
I would, yes, Adam.
My, so I hear, I, as much as I, you know, I, I'm on the executive, as you mentioned, of the neighborhood association. And they, I'm fairly confident that they would do it. I do believe that the, that the purpose of the planning board, having done it through the Heights Association previously, after having failed a town meeting, was to achieve the outcome that we did. Now that we have that feedback, we've begun this process. This process is a direct result of the serious feedback that we did receive. And so it's not unreasonable for the town to embark on its own process based on that community feedback. And the purpose of the public hearing is to hear any more additional comments from this adjusted proposal. So I, and if we are running up on time.
We are.
Then, you know, as Ted is saying, that I think we gotta, you know, we have interest, we're aligned with, Ted, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like we're aligned with FinCom. We're certainly aligned with the Select Board right now. And I think if that's the case, I, you know, I would hate to see us lose the opportunity to achieve it this year, 2021, as a result of a community meeting that has already been, that was already done for this purpose. Like, Paul, you were right. All the reasons to have a community meeting are 100% right. I completely agree with you. But that's why we had the community meeting. And the community meeting was done. I don't know that we necessarily need to have multiple community meetings before we stand firm on our ground with a reasonable proposal before we miss the market.
So our message to the public, whether, I'll just give one quick sentence. Our message to the public through the media, that is, you know, the newspaper that might want to write about this. And what we say at the public hearing is we listened to the community. We had a community meeting. We responded. This is what we're presenting as a result of that process. All right, Paul, Paul Alpert, please.
Okay. So I've got two things to say. Mine is, again, I'm repeating what I said before. From a political point of view, political buy-in, political support from the neighborhood, that's one of the reasons that I want to have it, even if it's only a week before our public hearing. It's something just to say to them, we're showing it to you beforehand so that you can prepare for the public hearing, so that you know where we are, where we stand now, having heard your comments from before. I want to repeat what I said at the Select Board hearing that morning, which is that in my opinion, and it's just one person's opinion, we are not going to have a May town meeting. We're going to have a June town meeting and probably the end of June. We're all going, everybody, everything I'm hearing is that the vaccines are going to
You're frozen, Paul.
And while Paul is frozen.
Back?
You're back.
You're back now.
I still, Lee, I would like to ask you to ask Kate what her thoughts are about their town meeting will be postponed into June again this year, given the current status of COVID, because I, I think it will be, it will give us a little bit more time. And I'm back to saying, I agree, we'd like to get it done in 2021, but if it doesn't get done until October, I'm fine with that.
Madam Chair, there's a hand up from one of the attendees, not a panelist, an R. Dermody.
Mr. Dermody, Mr. Dermody is a real estate broker in town.
This is not a hearing.
It's not a hearing. We typically do not have people who are watching or listening in comment unless it's a hearing. And I propose we stick with that as we try to make this decision here. Okay. What worries me is when will we know when a decision has been made about the date for a town meeting?
Well, I can reach out to Kate tomorrow and get a clarification.
Can we make a final decision on, on this at our meeting on the 15th? Or are we, or give you some general guidance? If, if this, then that, if this, you know what I mean?
Well, I think what I'm going to do is I'm just going to have Natasha factor, factor in an extra meeting and give me a cost on it and we'll have to decide on a schedule then. Although I was going to have her basically put together a schedule in the proposal and dates when things were going to happen. What will cause you to, to move forward with a community meeting? Is having a town meeting in June, the factor that would allow, that would, that would suggest you want to do a community meeting, but if, if it's, if the meeting is going to be in May, we're, we're going to just go straight forward to the zoning hearing?
Not for me.
That's, that's what I thought Paul was suggesting.
Well, I was just suggesting that having that information will help us to know it. I'm with Marty. I would still like to have a community meeting, even if it's just a week before our, our
Public hearing.
Right, open, open hearing, just, just to let the people know that we are, you know, they're, they're, they're there in the forefront of our minds and we want to let them know where we are beforehand, instead of just having them show up.
Isn't that the purpose of the public hearing to begin with?
No, the purpose of the public hearing is that the statute says we have to have one.
No, but what's implied by that, Paul, is, you know, is, I think, to hear from the public. And the purpose of a notice hearing is to give them that opportunity to provide questions.
It is, Adam, but I'm back to the political situation. We're trying to get the votes. We want to have, we want to have the neighborhood on our side. We don't want between the public hearing and town meeting, the neighborhood calling their town meeting members and saying we weren't given enough info.
Frozen again.
You're frozen again, Paul.
Come back, Paul, come back.
He's frozen in a very emphatic way.
Information enough to get the neighbors on when we go for a town meeting.
Okay. Say one thing to Paul, Paul, and that is, wasn't, but I really, I understand the value of a community meeting. If you have a community meeting and you listen to people and then you adjust your proposal before you advertise it for a zoning hearing. I don't totally understand the purpose of a community meeting when you have a noticed hearing out for proposal to specific.
Noticed, but Lee, the noticed hearing is not necessarily the final product because we listen to the comments at the open, at the open meeting and we adjust. We, we can't make it more expansive, but we can cut it back or whatever, whatever the rule is, but it's not, it's, it's not an up or down yes or no on what's being noticed in the newspaper.
I'd like to see.
We have time to tinker.
I'd like to make a suggestion here on a reason I see for having a pre, a community meeting. If timing permits, we would want to have the community meeting before we, we get the zoning informed for, we're noticing of a public hearing. You know, we'd want to have the step process, the community meeting that would guide us in drafting the zoning that we then make the subject for the public hearing.
No, I disagree.
Well, my special reason is yet. How are we going to decide whether to draft zoning that includes residential use? Mixed, you know, mixed, mixed residential, commercial use? Unless we hear from the public. That's a very basic decision right at the beginning. And I don't understand, without any kind of community meeting, how we're going to decide to go forward on that issue.
I think that's a decision that we're empowered to make and we're going to discuss that and we're going, and we're going to make that decision. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to alert the the neighborhood people, the most important people who will, who might be against us as to where we are in the process, what we intend to present to town meeting so that they have that information beforehand and, and feel that they have been listened to and consulted. They need to know that we're just not going full steam ahead and saying, okay, we heard from you last fall before COVID. We're done listening to you or we're done hearing from you. We're going forward with what we want to do.
Well, why didn't I, why didn't I communicate with Kate and why didn't I lay out a schedule two ways with, with how it would work with a community meeting? And then how it would work without the community meeting if it really becomes too tight? Does that make sense?
And do we have time to make a decision on this in, at a December, mid-December meeting?
If not, I can, I can certainly circulate the, the, the schedule around in the interim time, so we can have a conversation that way.
Yeah, because making a decision on agendas is something that can be done outside of a public meeting rather than the substance, but the scheduling and the agendas can be discussed. Okay. So we, we finished with that agenda item. Is there more guidance you want to seek on that, Lee?
No, I, that's what I wanted to accomplish.
Okay, so we had the budget submittal. And I, I compared it with last year's just to see the differences. And of course, the elimination of the economic development coordinator from the planning department is the big difference in the budget and in the text also. And, you know, it's, it's a good job of updating all of, for every, every part of the planning office, the zoning board, the conservation commission, the planning department, you know, the giving, giving the progress we've made and what we anticipate. A lot of work went into preparing this document. I have a couple of small comments. But was there something in particular that? But was there something in particular that, Lee, that you want us to focus on? And do you want to make a kind of presentation about it?
Well, yes, briefly, I, well, I just wanted to say that the budget on the staffing side is, as Jean said, is pretty much a level-funded budget. The significant change is the move of the economic development position to the town manager's office out of the Planning and Community Development Department. And that there are really two programs that we're looking for funding on. The most significant one for this board is the refunding of the planning studies, which is $60,000, $60,000, I think, allocation. That would fund planning studies, the monies would be put into an account that we could access. So as the work, you know, was identified, the planning monies would, would be available to satisfy it. Because we are going to run out of money this year with the completion of Highway Commercial One, and then there won't be any money sitting in that bucket for us to use going forward. And then the other piece of it is that we had requested funding to continue the Small Repair Grant Program, which has been quite successful, and we've actually spent down all the money that was out, or committed all the money that was allocated to last funding round for that, for that program. And I just wanted you to be familiar with the budget, the budget and the two add-on programs that the department was going forward with.
Ted, you have a declaratory question. Better so you can.
Adam's son.
Yes, you wanted to say hi.
I, I apologize, Madam Chair.
No. We have a special guest at our meeting this week, hi.
Oh, no, I'm just here until, until my mom yells at me to brush my teeth.
Let me save her the trouble, go brush your teeth and go to bed.
What a good boy. All right. So that seems, you know, reasonable, a naturally reasonable request that we continue to get the $60,000, that we continue to have a budget for planning studies, and that we have it in the amount of $60,000. And I have a question about the Small Repair Grant Program. What, how is that staffed within the Planning Department?
Karen Sonnenborg actually is the staff person that's overseeing that, so she receives all the applications and processes, all of them, and reviews them.
Yeah, I thought that's what it said, that, that's quite a bit of work.
Yes, it is quite a bit of work, and she's been quite, and she's been a very good job at it. But yes, she receives all the applications, she processes them, she reviews everybody for eligibility, looks at the projects that are proposed and files it through to completion, and then authorizes the payment out of the, out of the funds that have been committed for that purpose.
All right, do, is any member of the Planning Board, maybe I'll go around the screen here, and if anybody has questions or comments, Paul Alpert? I don't know if Paul simply doesn't have a comment, or if he's frozen again, let me move to Ted Owens.
No comments or questions.
Okay, how about Martin Jacobs?
No comments.
Adam Block?
Have no questions or comments, thank you.
That was Paul Alpert speaking, and now Adam Block.
No comments or questions, thank you.
All right. I just want to mention several places in the document where there's reference to the Planning and Economic Development Division. So I think the phrase "economic development" is still in the document in many places where I don't think it really belongs.
Okay, we can make a community development.
Yeah, so that was, that was my primary thing, I saw that on, on several pages. And I think and they may, oh, the, it's titled FY 2022 Department Spending Request. But for example, on page, section eight dash four, regarding the Conservation Commission, it says, "The Conservation Commission has identified the following primary goals for FY 2020." I think you might want to go through the document and just make sure the FY references.
Yeah, that's wrong.
Makes sense, yeah. And sometimes it says FY 21, and I, and in the context, it actually does make sense. Even though it's titled FY 22, you know?
Well, we're reporting on, on 21 results, and we're talking, asking for, for 2022.
2022, right.
I'll, I'll go back and check it, check the text.
Yeah, and on page eight, section eight five, on the, the Community Housing Specialist. There was, again, it had to do with the fiscal years, it was very confusing, I thought, what was being talked about, about this, actually about the use of the $60,000.
Well, this was used. This, this was money that we got to pay for the, the Community Housing Specialist through the CPA. It was supposed to fund half of the salary for that position. And because we had staff turnover, we didn't need to go into that fund for that position. So those monies were never spent down over those three fiscal years that they were supposed to be for that position, because there was staff turnover that enabled us not to have to touch it.
Oh, we, oh, then I understood exactly the opposite, where it said, reduced CPA allocations were required during the noting years.
Well, no, we required none, because we were able to cover.
Yeah, okay, well, maybe it's fine, but it made me think that somehow due to staff turnovers, money was being taken out of the $60,000 that had to be used for the, the turnover situation, rather than the opposite, we had it left over, okay. I just thought it was a little unclear. And I guess, I'm just scrolling through the pages to make sure I don't miss anything. And those seem to be my comments. Just take a careful look at the fiscal year references and the reference to economic development, which still, you know, is in various places in the document where it probably was intended to be deleted or changed. Okay. Oh, you know, I had a question too. It, it says in one of the sections that I think it has to do with the, what, what the priorities of the Planning Board, that we want to continue work in the Open Space and Outdoor Recreation Plan. It seemed as though that was completely abandoned as a goal. What is your understanding on what the town wants to do as far as having a revised Open Space and Outdoor Recreation Plan?
It's my understanding that the Conserva, that the Conservation Commission and Department are working on that.
That is your understanding? Okay, because there had been a committee, I served on it, and it was disbanded, and it was said like, we're, we're just setting this aside now. That was a good two, two years ago.
I thought, I thought that they were trying to complete the document.
Okay, good. Good, I'm glad to hear that. All right, so, so that was a substantive question. All right, then, I guess we're all set with that, and with the Board of Appeals, did anybody see anything they wanted to comment on? There were two, there were two zoning Board of Appeals new matters. One was for an accessory dwelling unit at 21 Utica Road. And apparently, there was something said that indicated perhaps the family had, had gone ahead and started the construction, and then realized they needed the permit. And it's kind of a little bit after the fact on seeking the permit. But there doesn't seem to be anything to me controversial about what they're proposing to do, or, or anything that caused for a comment on our part. And then the other is to, it's a pre-existing non-conforming property, so it has a setback issue. And they just want to put a second floor on an existing single-family ranch. On the second floor, as the first floor is somewhat within the setback, the second floor would be within the setback. So I, does anybody want to make any comment on either of those?
Want a motion, Jean?
Yeah.
I move that we make no comment on either one.
Is there a second, a motion from Marty Jacobs that we make no comment?
Second.
Seconded by Adam Block, I'll go for a roll call, any discussion, any further discussion on that? All right, I'll go for a roll call vote on that. Paul Alpert has dropped off of our meeting, he must be having technical difficulties, but we still have a quorum. So I'll go ahead with that vote. Mr. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mr. Owens? And Mr. Block?
Aye.
And the chair is aye, so, oh, Paul, please let us give you an opportunity also to vote. Did you wish to have, the motion was that there be no comment on the two planning and zoning Board of Appeals matters.
I vote aye on that.
You vote aye on that, all right then, so the chair is aye, so that is an unanimous vote. Now, there are minutes that there was sent to me yesterday, and I took my usual careful look at the minutes and made just very few changes and none of substance. And I don't know if others had an opportunity to look at the changes, they're really very minor. Would, would somebody want to make a motion to accept the minutes of October 6th to 2020 with, with the changes made after review by Jean McKnight or something like that?
Ms. Chairman, Ms. Chairperson, excuse me. I don't, I don't know what your comments are, but I, I just picked up one thing that's not, obviously not right, under the section "Report from Planning Director and Board Members." The first paragraph, first paragraph.
What page is that on?
Oh, gosh. It's near the end.
Oh, it's near the end, right, the report part, yep, let me turn to that. Yes.
Okay, first paragraph that starts, Ms. Ms. Newman stated she received. I think it's the fourth, fourth sentence. Says she anticipates a filing for Children's Hospital in the next few weeks at 140 Kendrick.
Oh.
She's mixing up two different things.
Yes.
So I, I think what she meant to say is filing for Children's and 140 Kendrick, I imagine.
Yes.
Yes, shall we just say that she anticipates a filing for Children's Hospital and 140 Kendrick Street? And I had a, I just mentioned as I was, we're at that paragraph in the third line, and that is the third sentence. A slight change for, for clarity to say, she will forward the 40B guidelines she got from the town manager and the letter from the Attorney General approving rezoning from the hospital. I mean, they're two separate things, and they were two.
Can I just go back to my comment, I didn't quite finish?
Oh, yes.
Where it says she's anticipating a filing for Children's and 140 Kendrick Street, and then it should say, where small t and they, and then it can continue. Because that next sentence refers only to Kendrick Street. You see what I'm saying, Lee?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, I see, so you're linking the reference to Kendrick Street.
To the following.
With, you know, kind of like a semicolon or an and or something. Where, where, or where they are updated inside plan, yep, okay. Yep. All right. My changes, I mean, when we talked about the Petco, it said, it previously said, the veterinary clinic will have its own entrance and will only be open during business hours, and I said, during retail store business hours, because that's what they were telling us. The, any other changes were really just spelling or or grammar. There's really hardly any changes, just. So if you trust me that there are hardly any changes, it's just grammar. Do you want to have a motion, or do you want to wait till another week and have a, a longer opportunity to review it?
No, I'm happy to make the motion to approve the October 6th minutes with your minor editing changes.
Okay, and the change that you just noted.
And that change, right.
Yeah, okay, so we have a motion to accept those minutes with those changes, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Jacobs' motion was seconded by Paul Alpert. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Owens?
Aye.
Mr. Alpert?
Aye.
And Mr. Block?
Aye.
All right, so we have the minutes taken care of, and then as far as correspondence goes, there, what was this, did you want to mention this from, on the, from the email from Tim Sullivan regarding children's and the timing and what date we might set if we agreed to have another meeting in December to finalize our decision on children's, Lee?
Sure, we, we received a request from Children's Hospital for having an additional meeting at the end of December, so that we could issue the decision. I, and we encouraged them to consider asking for an extension in their timeline, so that we could hear it in January, but they continued to ask us to meet in additional time in December. So I think there are, there's, you know, there's a possibility Friday, that I think of the 28th, the 29th, or the 30th, if the board wants to accommodate that request.
And they didn't just say two of those dates are best for you?
Well, Paul has his hand up.
Yes.
I when I originally said that I'd be available for a meeting, I will be around, I will be in.
Oh, dear.
Well, while we're waiting for Paul, I'll go back to my question to Lee. You had two dates, December 29th and December 30th. You are back, okay, Paul, go on.
I, I'm the last weekend for me, the, the, was in my practice, I get a lot of grand rush work that needs to be done. I did read to Mr. Sullivan today and expressed that concern to him, he would be okay with our deferring this until January. I know we have a January 5th meeting scheduled, Lee?
January 5th, Alex, is that correct? Yes.
I will probably not be at the January 5th meeting. I am available on January 4th, if we need to have a special meeting on the 4th.
Okay. If we, well, we have hearings, I have, have we noticed any hearings for the 5th yet, Alex?
Uh, no. No, I'm gonna go with no, I'm, I'm 99% sure.
I mean, so we could potentially, if it worked for everybody, move our meeting to the 4th, if that works for Paul, or the 6th.
Or we could have a special meeting just for Children's Hospital on, on the 4th or the 6th, and
Yep.
You could have your regular meeting without me on the 5th.
Okay.
Yeah, the 4th works for me.
Either one, either way, it's fine with me.
I'm okay with the 4th.
Yeah, 6th is good too, so.
I'm good either way.
Okay, well, then, that's, that's, that's good news, we don't need to have the special meeting in December, we'll plan on doing it in the first week of January.
Okay. So we've dealt with that, was there anything else in the nature of our report, Lee, that you wanted to?
This is Alex, could we decide on that meeting day? I, I don't know if we just did, but
Oh, okay, yeah.
It would be helpful, I know, I know we decided to do it that week, but it would be helpful for me if we decided the meeting date and changed it, because we have to reserve the Zoom number, and it's just. reserve the Zoom number and it's just logistics, so.
Let's make it the 4th, so we don't have to do it two nights in a row.
Thank you.
I second that motion.
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye, okay.
So we're doing a special meeting on the 4th and then, and the normal planning board meeting on the 5th, correct?
No.
Oh, we thought we could, since nothing's been noticed yet, we could just shift everything to the 4th.
Okay, fine. That, that's fine. We'll do that.
Yeah. I mean, the anticipation is not that the Children's Hospital is going to take so much time, but that
That's, that's perfect.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
I do have one other thing. I don't know whether Lee has anything else. Lee, do you have anything you want to go over?
I was just gonna report that, I was gonna thank you, Marty and Jean, for all the time you put in on the 40B guidelines and I I copied the board, the, the correspondents went to Kate this evening, so I'm sure she'll forward it to Dan Matthews and thank you for the time that you spent on that project.
It was, it was something I was very interested in working on, so glad to do it.
So can I, Adam, well, yeah, I'll defer to Adam and then I have one more thing.
Yeah, Adam.
I, I appreciate you guys stepping up and participating in that project. I was just putting my hand up under the heading of correspondence. I don't know if everyone else, I think you may have been copied on an email from the League of Women Voters.
Oh, yes.
And I just wanted to, you know, get a sense from everyone how whether there's any direction from the board on how to respond to the league and their request for interviews on our governance and practices.
I'm on the board of the League of Women Voters. And so, in fact, I'm even on the particular study committee for this study of town government. And I think that, you know, that one of the concerns the league has is that there are so few contested offices in our town elections. And a concern is whether there are people willing to run for office. And, and whether we have too many elected boards when as compared with other towns, some of the boards and offices are appointed in these other towns. I don't think anybody is thinking at all that the planning board should become an appointed office. But they're reaching out to every elected board and speaking with every elected board member who's willing to speak. So I think the idea is what does the, what, you know, what does the planning board do? What's its job? What is it like serving on the board? Well, you've seen the questions that are in the that, that were in the email. But that's, that's the background is a concern about participation in elected town boards and offices in this town. Yes, Paul?
I have one comment and one question. My comment is, I think it would take an act of the legislature to make us an appointed board because I think our being an elected board is statutory. And secondly.
Oh, yes. The, I've guided the committee on that. There were only three, three of the elected, I think it's the Board of Health and the Constables. And she, one other position that could be changed under the by, by law amendment.
My question is whether you're going to interview yourself.
No. They've got teams, two people. The teams will be one person doing the interviewing and the other person taking notes with no recording being done. So I'm not going to interview myself. But I, I did suggest one of the questions and one of the questions, the question I suggested was the support that the committee gets from town staff. Because I think that's an important question for any elected board. And also because I want to brag about how wonderful our staff is. So. So does anybody feel uncomfortable about this or what are they trying to learn or what?
So we just go on our own and just schedule time with them?
Yeah.
Individual chat.
Thank you.
I know I
Jean, I think it's a restart type of situation.
Oh, I like.
Sounding like a robot.
Okay, well, should I restart? I'm not finishing this video. I'm sorry, I will restart again.
I'm in charge here.
Are you going to adjourn us now? As your first and only responsibility is acting chair?
Yeah. I, I apologize for getting frozen out so often and then I, I had to.
So.
He's frozen, I guess.
Yeah. What happens now? We lost the chair and the vice chair.
You finished this meeting, Marty.
Oh, my gosh.
Am I frozen out again?
You, you kind of are.
Yeah, well, Jean's back, so.
All right, you're both back.
Oh, Paul is back, okay.
So let me just bring up the last thing I have. This has to do with 540 Hillside. Okay, this is a self-storage place that we permitted and which is basically built now. About three weeks ago, Lee sent me a copy of an insurance policy to review because she recalled that I was concerned enough with the insurance policy that we ended up with a particular provision in the permit decision. Let me just read it for you, so maybe you'll remember. This is 3.26. I won't read all of it. It says, "A copy of the insurance policy pertaining to the facility shall not contain any written exclusions from coverage resulting from the prohibited storage of hazardous or toxic materials or any inherently dangerous or flammable substances by tenants at the facility. A copy of the insurance policy shall be submitted to the board to determine if such a written exclusion is contained in said policy prior to building occupancy." Okay? So, that's the I'm sorry?
I know, I just noticed the if, a copy shall be provided if?
Shall be submitted to the board to determine
Oh, to determine if.
Exclusion is contained, because it wasn't supposed to be any such conclusion, exclusion. So Lee sent me this policy. And I, Jean got a copy of it too. Well, two things about this policy I want to mention. One is it's an absolute bear to read. It is long, it's involved, it's the furthest thing from plain language that I can imagine. It has multiple amendments and endorsements. It's beyond me. Okay? Not totally beyond me, but it's beyond me. So I mentioned that to Lee and she suggested, and I, I'm happy for the suggestion to refer to town council where I guess it's been now for at least two weeks.
Well, it hasn't been there for two weeks. He actually got it from me, I think, last week. And we, I, we prioritized getting all the documents done on the Heather Lane subdivision on his timeline. So in terms of planning board projects, I had him prioritize the Heather Lane subdivision documents for his review, which got finished today. And he's now focused on this and I was expecting actually a response from him this afternoon. I didn't, didn't get it, but I'm certain to hear from him tomorrow. Roy did reach out to me this afternoon.
Let me, Lee, before you get to, let me just give you the second issue, okay? So Chris Heap is the one who's doing it, I guess, is that right?
Chris, Chris has all the documentation and he has a recent email from Roy that came in today at 4:30.
All right, so that, the first issue is whether it complies with that paragraph 3.26. And that's what Chris Heap is looking at. There's a second issue. Which is what Roy's email today really, I think, was trying to focus on. And the second issue is this. One thing I did pick up because it was staring me in the face with this insurance policy is that it's in, it's in the name of some company, I forget the exact name, Westport something, something. And of course, our applicant and the owner of the property is Self-Storage LLC or something like that. So I said, well, this insurance policy doesn't have anything to do with 540 Hillside or self-storage. Unless, and there was a provision in the policy, unless it can be shown that Westport has a controlling interest in Self-Storage LLC. And so this was in communication between me and Lee. And what came back was this. That Self-Storage LLC owns the property. They were the developer. They are going to sell the entire property to Westport. At which point, Westport will be the operator and Westport has that insurance. But the way this condition is written, the, a copy of the insurance policy has to be submitted to, to the board to determine if a written exclusion is contained in said policy prior to building occupancy. So the building occupancy has got to come before that is, the issuance of the C of O has to come before Westport will take title. So the, what I said to Lee was, look, I just don't want there to be a gap. I don't want that building to be occupied before the insurance is in place. That's all. Simple. So today I got a call from Roy. He said, was it, was it me? He was asking me, was I the one that was raising this issue? I said, yeah, I raised it through Lee. I don't want there to be a gap. And so Roy suggested, well, what if, what, what he said was Self-Storage LLC, the current owner and the developer, has no intention of occupying it at all. They're gonna get the C of O and then they're gonna convey the whole thing to this Westport, but they're not gonna occupy it at all. He said, what if I send a letter saying to the board that we, we commit, self-storage commits not to occupy it with anything? Will then I, will I be satisfied that we don't need any other kind of gap insurance or anything like that? And I said, I would be, but why don't you write to Lee expressing it and I'll describe the issue at the board hearing tonight and see what other people think.
I, I, I did, I received the email. I, the question that you asked on the, with the gap was also referred to Chris Heap. So I asked him.
Why?
Why? It was because it was one of the questions you raised in, in, as being a concern to you. So when I transferred the issue to Chris Heap, I asked him to look for the compliance issue on that condition and I asked him to, to give us advice on the gap issue that you had raised. And so today, when I got the email from Roy, I forwarded that additional information onto Roy. So I had basically asked Chris to address all the issues that you had identified as problems.
Well, okay, I mean, I don't know why Chris needs to be consulted on the second one. That's really up to us, but I, I understand what you did, Lee. I don't have a criticism of it at all, but I, I think it was unnecessary, but if I've been clear, do people have any thoughts on whether such a commitment from Roy as counsel for self-storage LLC would suffice on that second issue? Clearly, Chris has to deal with the first issue. I don't want to deal with that policy, but this is a pretty limited issue.
I, I have a comment, but I want to make sure that others have an opportunity first to this is the first day I may have heard of it and I had heard of it before. Others have any comment on this issue particularly of the satisfaction on the transfer? Yes, Paul?
Yeah, I'm okay with it as long as our file has the written communication that it is clear exactly what's going to happen. Which is that there is a binding purchase and sale agreement with Westport. And that upon issuance of the certificate of occupancy, the property will not be occupied until Westport takes title. And that Westport is providing the insurance required by us. And if, if we've got that letter, and I'm fine with that letter being from Roy, we've got it in, in our file that this is how our condition is going to be met. And so I'm fine with that.
How about you, Ted Owens? Any further comment on this issue?
It, it's beyond me. It's a catch 22. We have a condition that says we will not issue a certificate of occupancy until the insurance is in place. And we now have an owner telling us that the insurance will not be in place until after the certificate of occupancy is issued. I, I defer to the lawyers on this one.
Yeah. Adam, any thoughts on your, and on this?
I can't put my lawyer's hat on because I'm not a lawyer. And I mean, from a common sense, from a practical point of view, if our lawyers are satisfied that Westport takes the responsibility of of having effectively an insurance policy that we're satisfied with, that seems like a fairly pragmatic solution.
Okay, I, I do have a comment here and it occurred to me that, well, if the insurance policy doesn't run to subsequent owners, what happens four or five years from now when this new buyer, Westport, decides they're going to sell to somebody else? I mean, I know it would be a violation of our special permit and it would be a cause for rescission of the occupancy permit. But it's, it's kind of a difficult thing to enforce. Don't we want an insurance policy that would run to the current owner, Self-Service LLC? And it would say that this policy, the benefit of this policy may be assigned to a subsequent owner of the property? Do you think that's possible to get? I, I, I've never dealt that much with insurance, but so what do you think, Marty? Is it possible to get such a policy?
I don't know, but that's a separate issue and it's not a requirement in our permit.
But it certainly is implied that during all the period of time of the, of this building being occupancy for self-storage, it will be so insured.
Yes.
Just.
It's definitely implied, yes.
Yeah, yeah. I, I would see that when I said it's going to Chris Heap. I was wondering if they're if he might know whether it's customary to get such you know, carry on of insurance. Paul Alpert, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, well, first of all, I, I, I got frozen out again, so I don't know how much of my prior comments got heard. I think it may be possible for Westport to get its insurance policy to to include Self-Storage LLC as an additional insured. And that could, that, that, that would solve the problem.
Do you, I'm wondering. Paul, we did hear your previous comments pretty well, but I'm wondering now if, if you mean because the current owner is Self-Service LLC, do you mean?
It's like landlord insisting that a tenant get insurance. It's like landlord insisting that a tenant get insurance and name the landlord as an additional insured. I would think that Westport's policy could name Self-Storage LLC as an additional insured.
So the policy.
That would be at minimal cost to the parties.
Or.
Okay.
Let me just throw out another alternative. If you don't like the idea of this, this letter being enough, uh, again, it satisfies me, but if, if, if you didn't like that. And one of the things I discussed with Roy was whether the insurer might issue, uh, a, uh, insurance, make, make that insurance effective now, even before closing for Westport. Because Westport has an insurable interest under the per, they have a binding purchase and sale agreement. They have an insurable interest. They could extend the insurance to now.
What did he say?
He said it would be easier to do the letter. He's right.
Yeah. Well, shall we wait and see what, uh, attorney Heap says about this, but also make sure that he, um, I'm just, he is made aware of, of this discussion we had at this meeting and other possibilities for making sure that coverage is in place and whether he has any suggestions along those lines.
Well, if he's already studying it and Lee's going to hear about it from him tomorrow, I mean, why not?
Yeah, we, right. Well, we'll wait, wait for his response and then say, "And by the way, what do you think of this?"
Yeah.
You mean, okay.
I'm curious what the board thinks on its own, independent of Chris Heap's thought.
Well, you know what I think.
The letter is fine.
Yeah, I, I don't know if I was frozen, but I was fine with the letter. I wanted to tighten up the language a little bit, but I was fine with the letter from, from Roy.
All right, so if.
I can communicate that to Chris, that we, the board discussed it and that you would be amenable to accepting that, that the letter would satisfy.
Um, as long as we have Chris Heap involved, you want to have the letter go to him, um, have him take a look at it.
Yeah, it already has.
He already has. Oh, okay, good.
Oh, Chris has seen the letter. I didn't know that. I, I said.
You sent it to him? I thought you sent it to him.
I sent him Roy's email.
Right, that's the letter though, but in, it, it's Roy's email contains the language we're talking about.
Okay, that's fine. Well, I sent that to him when I got it this afternoon.
Okay. So to, you know, as long as he thinks that, um, that, um, creates an, an enforceable obligation.
I'll ask, I'll ask for his, 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 his input.
As a practical matter, um, Roy is really clear that the Self-Storage LLC company, they are not operators. They have no desire to operate. They have no desire to have it occupied by anybody. They want to turn it over unoccupied. So to me, it makes all the sense in the world, but.
Um, I want to interject that we were told that right from the start.
We were.
I do remember that, that the proponent was a developer of these facilities and looked to find operators. And I wasn't sure at the time whether it was a lease situation or a sale situation. Now we know it's a sale situation, but I did understand that at the beginning. And one thing I just want to throw in, it's sort of, by the way, you know, I look out my window and I see this building. I am probably the closest to butter to this building. And I like it very much. Um, I, I look, I, it, it really blends in very well to the other buildings that are around it. And they did a nice design job. I haven't talked to our neighbor who was so upset about it, but, uh, maybe I will someday and see what he thinks. I, but, um, uh, I, I'm looking back to when I participated in the decision and because I thought it was a reasonable use, it didn't generate much traffic, it wouldn't, didn't generate much parking. I thought, yeah, this is an okay use across the street from me and I participated in the discussion and the vote. After that, you know how annually we have to review the, a conflict of interest law? And I should have known this, but the conflict of interest law says that you should not participate if you're in a butter, whether you like the project or not. And so it's a lesson to me to remember that in the future. But in any event, I am very happy with it.
I was under the impression that you could participate as long as you disclosed it.
And I did disclose it.
Yeah.
Well, maybe.
I mean, I've, I, I've participated in, in, uh, issues that involve Ridge Hill and the Nike site.
I think you, I think you have, you have to say that you can be, um, you can be dispassionate and make a, a decision, uh, something like that, but when I read, well, next time we're reading the conflict of interest law, I just keep that question in mind. Uh, I thought when I read it and answered the questions about it, you know, if you do that for the town clerk, uh, I said, "Oh, I shouldn't have participated, so." Anyway, confession time.
I'll turn you in.
All right, so is there anything else that we want to discuss at this meeting?
Oh, I just want to bring one thing. I, I brought this to Jean, your attention and to Paul's attention, that we might be getting an application from Sweet Preserve to, um, start to offer breakfast. Um, and we'll, we'll process that as a de minimis change and not a full amendment if they want to go forward with that, so. Uh, rice barn, Lee, rice barn. Oh, rice brown or, oh, white rice barn, okay.
Yeah, the Sweet Preserve is a conservation landed. And it's behind the Hillside School.
Oh, yeah, I'm so, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm getting, I'm getting my projects, um, I'm getting my projects mixed up.
Uh, okay, so the rice barn. Oh, and, uh, I, I, I just know that we're going to have on our agenda soon our proposed multifamily development in the Hillside Business Zone. And I went out and just took a walk by the site, just so I had it clear in my head where it is. And, uh, this is very interesting that we have, I think they're talking about an eight-unit development, which would require in that zone, um, I forget if it's one or two affordable units. And it is a special permit, uh, allowed by special permission in that zone. If you're going, uh, if you're going, if you're coming from Hillside and, and going, uh, kind of northwest toward Wellesley, toward, toward Central Ave, on Hunterwell Street. Uh, it's number 140 Honeywell Street, just the other side of the railroad tracks towards Wellesley. And it, right now, there's a single, I think it's a single story, maybe it's two-story brick, kind of small office-type building, uh, which, which would be torn down. So I thought that, that's coming before us. That'll be interesting.
It doesn't, we don't require affordable units on that district.
Oh, is that right?
No, we don't, we don't, that, that, that language, that zoning was actually created, I think, nineteen, I want to say nineteen eighty. Did not have that.
I thought we did, but okay.
Adam Chair?
Yes.
Are you ready for motion to adjourn?
Yes.
I so move.
Second.
All right, Mr. Owens has moved to adjourn. Mr. Albert has seconded that motion. Uh, we'll roll call, vote on the motion to adjourn. All right, I'm going to go where the photos are now. Mr. Block?
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mr. Albert?
Hi.
Mr. Owens?
Hi.
And the chair is aye, we stand adjourned.
Thank you all. Good night.
Thank you.
Marty, my comment that I think was frozen out was to say, "Welcome to the world of reviewing insurance policy."
Oh, God, it's.